Good afternoon. Am I getting some feedback? We'd like to welcome everyone to our work session. Today is Tuesday, November 15th. Can we do a roll call, please?
Member Higgins? Member Jacobs? Member Donley?
Here.
Member Holloman?
Present.
Member Lessons?
Here.
Member Wilson?
Present.
President Bellamy?
Here. Member Jacobs will be online. So that brings us to item B. I'm not sure if we can do anything about that feedback. I'm hearing myself talk. Okay. Just a little bit. Testing, testing, one, two, three. Okay, thank you. So we are on item B, our request for information, RFIs. Let's see what we have left over. So while we are pulling up the old list, okay, here, here we go. Let's see, what do we have open here? We have a request for member lessons, participation in pre-K. I can't really read that.
Oh, yeah. So I, I know I sort of emailed off a series of RFIs or items to be considered as RFIs. And I'm trying, oh, I was looking at preschool, the first one. Yep, the first one was a question about like, we're going to be advocating for preschool funding for sort of the existence of what we have, maybe in a different form or additional pre-Ks. I'm interested in understanding proof and concept, I guess. So the data that shows that the investments we've been making have been positively impacting our students.
Okay. Is there another person interested in that information? That we can prioritize? Member Donley, thank you. Alrighty. Dr. Bryant?
Member Lessons, I may clarify, are you seeking data from ASD on ASD pre-K programs?
Yes.
I would anticipate that would be slightly difficult to produce. It would be difficult to discern a causal relationship from our data for a number of reasons. There are a number of national studies on pre-K perhaps that we could refer you to in a board connect?
I mean, national data is nice, but I'm specifically interested in wondering whether the investments that we've made with the particular curricular models and I mean, we have, there's a philosophy guiding our pre-K programs. And I'm wondering if that's translating into kids who are more ready for kindergarten and who are succeeding in kindergarten and first grade, you know? Are there, do we have data showing that it's, somebody mentioned at some point, well, maybe our pre-K programs are lowering the cost of special education later on? Like, that would be a great fact to know a little bit more about. So I'm interested in both the educational outcomes and maybe the value added.
So is that, and I guess you would want that pretty?
I'm thinking in advance of a legislative session.
Session before, like January.
Let's say, yeah, before January, mid-January.
So would a work session maybe about that be good with?
I mean, that's a whole lot of time to dedicate to one question.
It's going to be a lot of time to dedicate to get you to data anyway. I'm trying, I think a work session might get it to you quicker.
Okay, I mean, maybe, well, it may be useful to have a preschool work session as, I mean, it looks like we're going to talk about the pre-K academy as well, a little bit, but.
So what I would recommend is I will consult with the assessment evaluation team. I am not aware of any studies that we've done. But we can provide a response on board connect as to whether or not that's feasible, but we'd be happy to look into it.
Okay.
Thank you. So the date, the timeline for that would be January 15th. About, if not before.
Okay.
Okay. And then we'll, we'll proceed based on Dr. Bryant's feedback. Okay, next question. Next question? Yeah, but he's not, he's not in this pool right here. Okay. So the next question is, what do our elementary and secondary ASDV grades look like this fall? So that, yeah, I think this one can probably go into fourth net. So would Friday be okay? Great, thank you. Next. Okay, this one is, I think this is a it is my understanding that Mr. Bingham provided, oh, the Fairbanks.
Yeah, that was an
Did you get some information on that?
I do appreciate that we receive, my question, can the board receive a copy of his recommendation inclusive of his inputs and recommendations? I guess like inputs and conclusions. I was referring to whatever generated the set of six school proposal, the six schools. And we were told an email over the weekend that we would be getting a much more in-depth report in early December, if I recall. And then we were also given, I think, about a 2018 report. So that was helpful for me for understanding where some of the initial suggestions came from, but I, I think that waiting until early December is fine.
Okay. Alrighty, thank you. Early December on that one, if not before. Was that the last one?
No, I kept asking.
Okay, can the board receive a report comparing immersion student proficiency scores?
Yeah, I mean, with all of these questions, I'm trying to understand the value of the programs, the investments, the schools, considering the costs. So I'm interested in understanding how well our immersion students are doing compared to their neighborhood counterparts. And I'm not sure what the best measure of assessment would be.
Or if we even have.
Or if we even have that, I mean.
So that, well, that's the right question.
Right. So, you know, one route we could go is provide you a raw list of data for immersion students and non-immersion students. But it would be very difficult to discern any sort of causal relationship by doing that, because you'd have to isolate immersion as a sole variable. For example, many non-immersion students in an immersion school may be in a combination class, for example. So it may not be the fact that they're not in immersion and why they're performing at a lower rate. It might be because they're in a combination class. So it would be very difficult to discern information that could guide your decision-making from ASD data. But that said, I did do some research on the, the national research on immersion programs. And I believe it was Detroit Public Schools that participated in a randomized control study on immersion. And from that, you'd be able to glean some insights if you'd be interested in that information.
Sure, I would welcome that. But again, as I think ahead to when I have to vote to fund something or not fund something, I'd like to know the value of the investment.
I, I'm not saying that I don't, that I disagree. I just know there is a vast difference in the headwinds and tailwinds that kids experience in, in our schools. So you, that, to me, that's apples and oranges. So we have to be very cautious, because you might get not, you might get a picture that's incomplete. But we will put it on the, leave it on the list, and then we'll figure out how to you, you're going to give her some information and then we'll go from there. Thank you. Okay, wow. Okay, so we have the next one. Was that it? Okay, so now we have member Donleys, which we just got today.
Thank you, Madam President. To go back over one previous one, the Pledge of Allegiance survey request. As the board members know, there's a state statute that requires the pledge of allegiance to be said in our schools shall be recited regularly, that's AS 1403130, as determined by the governing body. And this body has determined that it shall be said every day in our classrooms. There's an administrative regulation that said it shall be said over the loudspeaker system, the public address system in the classrooms every morning. I have personally confirmed that's not being followed. And the, brought this up while the prior superintendent was still here. And there was a commitment from that superintendent that there would be a survey to determine what schools are not complying with the administrative regulation. In the most recent board connect, the in response to the request for that survey, it identifies that the updated survey should be, should multiple board members have interest in this information? It would only be performed. But it was already committed by the prior superintendent, Madam President. I believe it should be completed.
So, okay, thank you, Member Donley. So for, for today, for your questions, you're submitting them to go on the list. We're not going, we can't discuss them today. We did, we did not have, we're not going to discuss them today. So we have your lists, we will add them to the, to our, to the RFIs. I just want to make, excuse me, make sure that so you have a question regarding the pledge, you have a question regarding reports from the administration, you have a question regarding controversial, controversial concerns committee. And some of this was already given to you in the board, in the, in board connect. You want, you want information on Birchwood School? Board meeting procedure? Okay, will the, so we'll put these on for, so that they can be prioritized at our next meeting. That's how, that's kind of how this goes. That's how we've operated.
Well, that's not how we've always operated, but if that's how, you're the president, if that's how you choose to operate, that's.
It is, thank you. So all of these questions would go on to the, for the, for the next one.
But I would like to talk about the Pledge of Allegiance survey at this time, because it was previously noticed. And the response came to the board in the board connect that I was disappointed in. And said that we wouldn't pursue it unless it was brought up again and requested by more members.
Members of the board. So.
And it was already approved to be done by the superintendent.
You are correct. You are correct, it was. So the, the response, what you're saying, Member Donley, is the response in the board meeting, I mean, in the board connect was inadequate? It was not what you expected?
Well, it was nothing. It was like, we'll, we're not going to do it unless more board members ask us to do it.
So is there?
Admitted to by the administration prior to the existing superintendent being in place.
And, okay, the previous superintendent answered that question multiple times. What I would like to do is have, recommend, if we can move this to governance and take another look at because you're referencing the ARs in a way that I don't, I don't recall them saying. They say that we will say the pledge, it doesn't say it will be in every sing, every single like, school-wide, because we have programs, schools with programs that are indifferent. They, they function differently.
Well.
So we're not in disagreement.
That's just inaccurate, Madam President. It clearly says that in the administrative regulation portion of the, of the policies.
So would.
That was brought up at the meeting and specifically was discussed by the prior superintendent, who then subsequently agreed to do the survey, because at least two schools from my personal inspection were violating the administrative regulation and not holding the pledge over the public address system. Now, it's really crucial that it be over the public address system because of, because of the state statute. And there'd be a total lack of accountability for what's happening in the classrooms without it being over the public address system, which is why I envision there, there is an administrative regulation longstanding that says it shall be done over the public address system.
Dr. Bryant, do you have any comments?
I, I would be open to the idea of discussing this in depth in the governance committee meeting. The reason why in board connected states that we would need multiple board members interested is because it would be a substantial investment of time if we were to, you know, audit every single campus to ensure it's being done.
Dr. Bryant, you, you may not be familiar with it, but the matrix already exists. It's a simple punch a button and do a survey in your distribution to your, your email distribution to the principals. It was done a few years ago. It, it was revealed that there were some discrepancies. The superintendent committed to do it again, saying it was going to be easy to do.
Okay, so Member Donley wishes to have a survey. Board members, this, he we need at least, we need to prioritize this, because it will take a lot, it will take some time. Maybe not as much as, as little as punching a button, but we'll have to figure, the administration would have to figure that out. So our priority is immediate. With it, what is our priority? What is our layout on the immediate, short-term and long-range? And he has been waiting a while for this information. So what is, yes.
If I could offer a suggestion, I recently happened to be in that part of the policy, and it does talk about the intercom system and whatnot. But as you point out, that's not workable in every single one of our schools. If we revisit this later this week in governance and perhaps look at a policy that is enforceable on every location first. I'm thinking it might be more efficient, because if we survey first and then change a policy, we'd have to go back and survey again to see if people are willing or not willing, but are complying with that. I'd offer that up as a suggestion that we would take it up Thursday. Discuss it. And, and I think there might be some tweaks we would have to make for every school to be able to adhere to the policies that's written.
So the ARs belong to the administration, but the policy is ours. So yes, member Donley. Would Thursday be okay to try to look at the policy, the policy again?
I'm concerned that we are out of compliance with Alaska state law. This should have been done months ago. It was agreed to be done. It was committed to be done. It hasn't been done. It's not like it's a new issue. I, I, I don't think I should have to, or this board should have to wait to discuss it again before we do identify how many schools are actually not following it, since I personally know, have experienced at least two schools that aren't.
I think that was a year ago.
They're not schools that would have some reason not to do it either. They're standard schools, a middle school, a major middle school, I mean.
Yes, Member Higgins.
I appreciate where Member Donley is coming from. I, I remember when I first got on here and it was mentioned and it died for discussion for purposes of anything else. I don't think that's happening right now. I think you've got the attention that we want to hear this out. I want to know what the, what everything reads, what it does, and how we go about this. So I think there's a serious response to meet on Thursday and have a good discussion with this. You're not going to get within the next 10 minutes a definitive answer right now. And if you did, it wouldn't be, it may not be as good as what you get on Thursday anyway. So I, I think that at this point in time, I appreciate your frustration with it. Because I don't think it was, it's been discussed, at least while I'm on the board adequately. But I do think I'm committed to it, that on Thursday with the governance committee would do that. We'll get it done.
Okay. So we will add Member Donley's questions, except for the pledge, that's a returning question, which we will refer to governance. Alrighty, any other RFIs? And I can share, you'll be able to, once we get Member Donley's questions in, some of them might be able to be answered through board connect. Others might, if, if, if there are any that can be answered through board connect, we will, we'll get those answered right away, Member Donley. The others we'll bring back for prioritization.
Thank you, Madam President.
Okay. Alrighty. That brings us to our discussion for today, item C, Dr. Bryant.
All right. Good afternoon, ASD Board and community. This afternoon, we'll receive a presentation on the annual comprehensive financial report regarding the previous fiscal year, after which we'll continue to discuss budget solutions to address our $60 million deficit. As December neers, we'll need to begin the process of making decisions from what has been shared with you throughout the research phase. Our budget deficit amounts to 13% of the general fund, and yet direct instruction in school-based programming amounts to 92%. So what that means is that there's no long-term solution that won't involve changes to the way the district operates. We're committed to giving the board and the public the information needed to move forward and pass a balanced budget. And with that, I'll hand it off to our presenters.
Excuse me, just a minute. So we have a problem with our live stream. Do we want to take a net ease while we see if we can get it fixed? Okay, we're going to take a brief at ease, no more than 10 minutes, try to get this fixed. We would want everybody to hear. Thank you and welcome.
Right. Well, we could overrule it. We could overrule it. We're not like, we're not like, right, right. Okay, these are our, this is, well, this is the AR.
Yeah.
Shall be recited regularly at the start of school day.
Yeah.
So that's every day it started, here's the state statute, it should require the pledge to be recited regularly as determined by the government body.
Want to welcome everybody back? I don't test. It'll take a minute for the board members to get back. Board members? Just, okay. Okay. We're almost ready, we're just troubleshooting the live stream to make sure. I think we're ready. Okay. All right, I think we're going to, uh, continue our meeting. So we are still, the meeting is still being recorded via Zoom. Uh, we had some technical difficulty, which I hope we worked through already. All right, so welcome guys again, thank you.
Good afternoon.
Hi. Can you tell us your names again, I'm sorry?
Yeah, my name is James Doughty, I'm an assurance partner with BDO, I've been working on the audit for the school district for about 16 years and. Prior to that, I graduated from Anchorage School District.
Oh, right, look at you, okay.
Right, Aurora Cokerland, I'm the Senior Director of Finance.
All right, welcome.
This is my baby.
She's pointing to the annual financial, the annual comprehensive financial report, just in case you wonder. Well, thank you very much.
These are his notes, you should have received a copy of the ACFR electronically.
Okay.
So, good afternoon, everyone, what I want to do is I want to go through the, uh, audit wrap-up document, that's the document that you have in front of you, says report to finance committee, Anchorage School District. Uh, this is the required communications between the external auditor, uh, and the board. I'd like to start on page five, uh, it says status of our audit. So we have substantially completed our audit, audit of the financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2022. Uh, as a reminder, the objective of our audit was to obtain reasonable but not absolute assurance about whether the financial statements are free from material misstatements. Uh, the scope of the work we performed was substantially the same as as we planned it, uh, there was no significant surprises, uh, when we started. Uh, we expect to issue an unmodified opinion, uh, as of today, November 15th. Uh, as a reminder, an unmodified opinion is a clean opinion, it's the highest level of assurance that you can receive on your financial statement audit. Uh, there are several audits that we perform for the district, there is the financial statement audit, there's an audit of your compliance with your state funding. And an audit with your compliance of your federal funding, uh, the federal and state compliance audits will be finished subsequent to this, however. Uh, what you've been presented is the financial statements and that, uh, as a reminder, we're going to issue our opinion today, uh, November 15th. And just to, just to highlight, you know, all records and information requested by BDO were freely available, uh, it was definitely a priority. Uh, for the district, for your management, for your accounting and finance team. Uh, as you imagine, an audit is not a small undertaking, there's a lot of documents that need to be sent and received and a lot of follow-up questions, so. We really appreciate the support that we received, uh, from your team. Uh, management's cooperation was excellent, excellent, we received full access to all information, uh, anything that was requested was provided. Moving on to page six, results of the audit, so as a part of your audit, we review your accounting practices, policies and estimates. Uh, there was a new accounting policy adopted this year, it's called GASB 87. Uh, it's recognizing the least liability that was previously just in your footnote. Uh, so on the very front schedule of your financials, you'll notice there is a right-of-use asset as well as a least liability. Uh, this is a new accounting standard, uh, the GASB, excuse me, had a pronouncement. And it's, uh, further detailed in note 10 on the financial statements. Another area that we look at is your accounting estimates, so your IBNR, your incurred but not reported claims for self-insurance. As well as your pension and other post-employment benefits, uh, your pension NOPEB is a significant liability on your financials, currently that is just an actuarial liability. Uh, based upon the future expected liability for the unfunded status of the plan, uh, you do not have a lot of control over that. Um, the plan sponsor provides that information to you, you simply record your corresponding share of that estimated liability. So when we review those estimates, what we want to see, there is not a change in the way that those estimates are being determined. And the ways that you're calculating that is still consistent with prior years, so no changes. Uh, moving forward a couple pages, results of the audit corrected and uncorrected misstatements, uh, there was one corrected misstatement, uh, this year that had to do with FEMA revenue. Uh, just recognizing the full amount that you had spent, um, in correspondence with the obligated funds from FEMA. As you continue to expend, uh, the money, uh, those amounts will be increased and you'll recognize the full funding, uh, for the FEMA obligation. So that was an adjustment that we discussed with management and recorded. Moving forward to page 10, uh, internal controls. Uh, so we are required to gain an understanding of your internal controls to plan and perform the audit. Uh, we're looking for controlled deficiencies, significant deficiencies and material weaknesses. There was just one item noted this year on page 11, uh, it was related to the adjustment for the FEMA revenue. Uh, other than that, there was no other material weaknesses, significant deficiencies identified. Uh, the FEMA is really just, you know, the district has been accounting for FEMA over the past couple of years, but not, um, significantly in the past. As mentioned, there was an adjustment to true up the revenue, uh, so there was a deficiency related to that. The next several pages is additional required communications. Um, this section, you're looking for just a lot of no responses, uh, if we had encountered difficulties, we would be communicating those to you. However, there's, there was no significant changes to our planned audit strategy, uh, no consultations with other accountants. Uh, no significant difficulties with management and no disagreements with management throughout the audit, so all in all, the audit was very successful. Um, it's a long process, uh, we're just getting ready to finish that, as I mentioned, we will finish the compliance audits for the state and federal audits subsequent to this. Uh, but once again, you have a clean, unmodified opinion on your financials, do you have any questions?
Thank you, board members' questions. I'm not seeing any. I don't see Carl's hands not up. All right, well, thank you.
Well, and as I said, you all received an electronic copy of the ACFR, review it, look at it. Send us any and all of your questions and then we will discuss it with you at the. Finance Committee meeting on December 7th, where we will also then have hardbound copies for you to take with you.
Awesome, right, thank you. Thank you, thank you both very much.
Thank you, have a great meeting.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, and that brings us now to our budget update, and I see the team is gathering. Thank you guys for being here. And again, for those of you who are, uh, trying to join online, uh, there is a Zoom link now. Uh, and it has been posted, so you can, uh, use the Zoom link, the ASD tube is not functioning. Uh, at the moment.
I'll pass it on to my team.
Good evening, um, I will go very quickly through some of the slides as we have a pretty long brief tonight. If we've already seen those slides before, next slide, slide, slide. Okay, I wanted to start off with the September survey, um, we're still collecting information from other, all the other town hall surveys, but. Um, you can see the questions, we put this in Board Connect a couple of weeks ago, but I thought it was important. Um, to go ahead and make sure that, that that was put in this brief for those who are following us for the first time. Um, and you can see the different topic areas where, um, for the most part, the vast majority of the, the. Areas that we were looking at in set, in all the way through the month of September to include school closures. Um, most of them received, um, very little support for those items, if you go to the next, next slide. What you will see in the bottom lower left-hand corner is of all of the topics and areas, the one that received the strongest support from the community. At large was consolidation of schools and school closures. And I just wanted to bring that up just as a reminder that the community looked at rightsizing our infrastructure as a legitimate. Um, measure to take, and, and I think most of the board members who visited the last few town halls. Um, recognized the, the disparity between, um, the community at large, uh, believing rightsizing. Is good for the community and each individual school, um, believing that. Um, although many of them may very well have thought rightsizing was a good way to go, just not at their school. So we still have three more town halls left, I suspect that that common theme will run through all of the town halls. Um, but I did think it was important to, just as a reminder, that the community did feel like that was a legitimate. Um, way for us to head, slide. Okay, on this slide, um, we won't go through each individual one, but I thought this was a good place. Um, for two things, one, if the board has any questions, uh, Shannon Bingham is in another meeting at this time, he'll be here in about 15 minutes. So if it's specifically for him, we can hold it, but I did want to bring up, uh, the fire last week at Aquarian. And whether the board felt like this would be a good opportunity to have a discussion as to whether. Aquarian should be moved up in the priority as the administration's looking at schools, um, or not. And I did want to point out that, um, we're working with Stream Academy, they're really looking for a place with more green space. Um, it's a huge part of, of everything they believe in, um, so they are sliding off the plate. However, we kept ANCCS at Wonder Park, um, as a recommendation, but, um, if there's any discussions about. Whether Aquarian should be moved up, um, the fire marshal and the, the maintenance folks have looked at the furnace. Um, I think almost everyone on the board is aware that, um, you know, all other furnaces have been inspected. And there's no known risk for any of the other ones, however, um, board members have a lot of communications with. Family members from that school, um, and there, there may just be a change of heart as to where they fit in priorities.
So my, are there any questions from the board? So I have just a clarification, so the fire. Was that part, was that the old bo, um, furnace or whatever?
It was one of several old furnaces, the 4.1 million dollar bond.
So that, that was not.
Until, um, discussions in December, um, that bond would have replaced doors, windows and all furnaces. If that were to be the direction the board would want to go.
Okay, all right, thank you. Member Les.
I have a question, but it might be for Mr. Bingham, um, it's my understanding. Based on a 2018 report that was shared with the board, that a target utilization. For a school might be about 88%. Do we know that the receiving schools, that the consolidation would, would land us somewhere around that mark?
We're currently finalizing it, we have multiple different ways of looking at it. Um, and I think what you're going to see in the December 7th report that he'll be publishing, um, the administration will receive it on the 3rd. Uh, because we're still tweaking boundaries against bus routes and some other things, we didn't want to put out. Final capacity estimates four or five times during this staffing process, only to potentially have some people discredit. Um, the fact that staffing sometimes changes numbers during the analysis, so you will see that on December 7th.
Okay, thank you. Member Don Lee.
I know you're working on this, but, uh, the question keeps coming up a lot, so I was just wondering, what's the, do you have anything now? That's a list of the projected savings at this time for each individual school closure that's being recommended.
You'll see that in this brief towards the end. Um, I didn't do the detailed breakout, there's a few things we're still tweaking about night custodians and which schools need partial FTE and full-time FTE. Um, once we finalize that piece, um, and to identify whether the current repurpose plan is, will be in effect. Um, we'll, we'll have the details, I would like to point out though that, um, I brought this up before, that this is a house of cards kind of plan. And if we have a repurpose plan and one school is taken off the list. It's possible that multiple different impacts occur as a result of that, um, changing all the numbers, so. Um, you know, sometimes when you're not sure which way the board's gonna go and how confident that that plan as, as an entity. Um, is going to be supported, uh, again, I think most of us have seen when we put detailed information out. And then it significantly changes because the, the situation changed. Some people still want to go back to the original number and say, but that's the number, but now the conditions have changed. And, and pre-K programs are now moving across the district in multiple other schools, and so all of the numbers change. And, and that's a reality most staff officers live with, um, during analysis.
Yes, member Higgins.
Thank you, um, obviously I support using any schools that may be closed. To the benefit of the safety and the, and the educational part of the thing, Aquarium, I think, has 300 something kids and they've got 300 and something on a waiting list. And within that community, if it was opened up with, with Northwood, there may be people in that community that may want to continue going there as well, so I. I think it would be well utilized compared to the current school that Aquarium's in, that's just from my perspective there. My, my concern goes beyond that, I support definitely, you know, using for, making things available to charter schools completely. But I, I'm more concerned about saying, what are the options again? Got a list of, we can close schools and save a few million dollars here or whatever, 6% of the total we need to do. But what are the options other than closing schools and asking us at this point with such a limited choice and say we have to cut. And, but this is what you've been offered, isn't to me giving the board the opportunity to evaluate and make that decision, not the administration. I want to make sure that it's best for kids, that's number one, and that's a big, and safety is indeed a high priority. I think we heard last night, uh, at the school, some of the emotional attachments and the impact, and that has an impact on educational outcomes too. Having schools that are in low-income areas where parents don't have transportation. And they have other concerns can impact their involvement in schools and impact outcomes for the kids, I think. So I, I want to see options available, not just, this is the one, how do you want us to handle it, I want to say, this is one option. There, this is how we're going to get to the total, some at least draft of what it is that we're being asked to consider. Rather than saying, do you approve this or not, and if you don't, you're not going to meet the budget thing, that's, that's what I don't want.
I think you're going to find on the Saturday, December 10th, we have an exercise we're building. That where every board member will individually be able to look at the different options and the potential costs. We'll also be able to provide deeper dive details, um, between now and then, and during the course of that exercise, I think all of us. Will have a good idea where each board member stands on how to get from, uh, down to zero. To find a, a balanced budget, you'll see tonight that we're adding additional costs for, um, the schools that potentially will close. We also have details on pretty much everything else, with the exception of administration, which we're still continuing to. We've gone through 17 departments now, we have more to go through, and you'll see that number continue to grow and towards the end of this brief, you'll see a little bit more of that. But you are going to see the details, um, a-again, during a normal budget build. There's about 50 draft products for any one thing when we finally come to, this is how much something costs. And the risk of throwing out a draft product every day or even every week, when you know that you haven't finished and it's going to significantly change. Is partially the reason why it causes angst, it causes distrust in the community, because people wonder, how could the number change? We've seen the RFIs this week, honestly, I could spend the next eight days doing nothing but answering RFIs. But when we finally have a fully flushed staff product, that's the time when. But when we finally have a fully flush staff product, that's the time when you should be showing the details to board members. But to do that before, you're asking a community of three hundred thousand to help staff. School closure plans and cost reductions, and that's certainly problematic.
I would.
Oh, go on.
Follow up. I I I hope this part of the cost estimates, it gets to the issue of saying. What do we need in a way of funding to improve academic outcomes? I mean, I know that's going to have a factor involved, though should be. And if it's a matter of cuts that will associate it and it's going to benefit kids with the academics too. There may be other changes we do. Some of those might be savings versus costs. It'd be the way around. Who knows what it's going to be? But I would hope that that would be some factor in here of saying there there's a dollar figure associated. As far as the fact that the costs are constantly changing. Usually you see notes on there called Naspik if you want to say these are these these things are subject to the following changes. You got this cost, that cost. And you kind of disclose that a little bit upfront from the public perspective. I certainly understand how budgets are a moving target. I don't have a question about that. We've always got people being hired and leaving and all the other changes that go through it. But I just see this as just, you know, you put the asterisk there and let it go forward. Because I think everybody who knows anything about budgeting finance is the best guess at the time. And I don't expect anything more than that. Thank you.
Okay, member Wilson.
So question, whenever the current Aquarian building is phased out, whether that be this year or next year, around two. Whenever that possibility is, will administration recommend the building be torn down like the recommendation came for Abbott Loop or repurposed?
We would likely go to, we would likely claim it as excess property to the district and go to the municipality for formal disposition. Then the municipality would come back to us as to whether they wanted it. Or whether they wanted it demoed, and then we would work with them as to who paid the cost to the demo. It's the same process for Abbott Loop. Officially, we don't decide what to do with the building. We we declare it as excess and work with the muni.
Member lessons.
One of the, I've had a lot of thoughts, but one of the thought bubbles has been. About the potential utility of the current aquarium building as a preschool center. Instead of displacing Northwood and. I don't know, has that been explored? I imagine you guys have thought. About a number of things.
We discussed it, and if the families of Aquarian thought their building was unsafe and needed to relocate. An early childhood education center for their use because of their thoughts on the building, it would seem a little bit disingenuous. To then put an early childhood center at that building. What we did look at as a very good option for Aquarian is CLAT. They would fit. It's a, when you look at the spread of where all their families reside, there certainly are a lot of them near Northwood. But Northwood's also very central to a very pop high population of economically disadvantaged students. When you look at the pre K kids at Northwood, ten of them are from that area. And all the rest are bust from outside that geographic zone. So it's already a geographic. Pre K conglomerate of classes and CLAT currently had. An an option to potentially put Highland Tech or PIDEA there. You know, Highland Tech does have a location right now. They could stay for round two and see how that goes and CLAT could open up for Aquarian as a very viable option. But but really looking at the aquarium building, if there's that much distrust in the building. That that'd be a, the optics of saying that's the perfect place for early childhood center might be, might be a little shaky.
Guess I have a follow up. And so if, I mean. There's four million dollars available to replace the doors, windows and furnace. And if those components are replaced.
And if that's good, then I don't know that we'd move aquarium.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Um, can I ask a separate question as long as we're sharing?
Remember, did you have a question? You good? Okay, you can go for it.
So I I imagine that you all looked at a number of schools for potential site closures or repurposing, and I'm wondering. I thought frankly about O'Malley because I believe there's a large portion of that school. That is being supported by the French immersion program. And I I support the immersion program, but if you moved that program, I think. And you you moved the sixth graders out. If we do pivot to middle school, you're left with about forty percent of the population still at O'Malley. And it just occurred to me that. I I'm just curious, why wasn't O'Malley selected for?
On December seventh, when you see Shannon's report, you'll see a list of twelve schools. Potentially more that are viable potential closure candidates.
Yeah, I think we tend to forget this is round one. These recommendations are for round one. Okay, let's start again. Member Higgins and then Donley.
Yeah, I just want to make sure something's clear. The idea that whether or not aquarium is an unsafe school versus putting it into a school that meets the state's. The school district standards are two different things. I want to make sure that that's that from my perspective. That I would like to see all kids in schools at the school districts level. Okay. We're not being able to do that. We've got we've got charter schools in different locations and a variety of things. I'm saying that we get the best utilization for the kids to give them the safest location. If we're going to pick a location for schools. That's what I would like to do. I'm not, if if I thought that aquarium was unsafe, I'd be arguing in front of the board that we need to close it. Along those lines, I don't have reason to believe that, although this latest incident concerns me a lot. But it it if I thought it was beyond that, I would take a different position. So I don't want the public or anyone else to put anything I'm saying. To indicate that I think it's an unsafe school for the kids at this point. I just don't think it's the best environment because the. The anchor school districts is better safe after an earthquake or some major thing compared to any other buildings in the community.
Member Donley.
Yeah, um, do you have any, is there anything that talks about Birchwood and explains some of the questions that were raised at the town hall from the parents? Like a, you know, like a one page explanation. The the impression from the parents is that the district intentionally cut off, you know, the lottery for Birchwood. Artificially creating the fifty one percent occupancy. And there was a, there was a significant waiting list. There's people wanting to get in there, but the district didn't provide the the teachers. To, you know, utilize, go down the list. They also pointed out that the kindergarten classes have like as few as thirteen kids in them and could have accepted more children. And there was, and the allegation was made, there were families that wanted to get in there that weren't allowed in there, even though there was space.
Well, I think if you heard the principal talk, there was a lottery, the principal, there never, it never was turned off. The principal accepted families up until the classes were full. So I can't. Explain why kindergarten was thirteen and people were on a waiting list or whether the facts were valid. I do know that at Birchwood, we have several grades where it's one class. When we talked about the optional, which is a three section school where there's three kindergarten, three first grade, three second grade. Birchwood is has one of the lower. You know, there are a lot of reasons we can, we can summarize more information, but. You know, frankly, every school we go to, regardless of what the analysis is, they're very proud of their schools. And and we should be happy about that. And they they will always find reasons why it should be any school other than theirs. And. I think we've seen that at every town hall so far.
Okay, right, that's.
So is there, is there not a waiting list for Birchwood?
To remember Donley through the present, there was a waitlist of thirteen students in kindergarten.
And I would just add that the district doesn't control that waitlist. That those are decisions made at the school level by the school administration. So I mean, it isn't something that we put some kind of a. Limit on them or told them they weren't allowed to to take more. They certainly have the space to.
Thank you.
Okay, that was one of your questions. Okay. Member Wilson.
So the the upcoming list of twelve schools that that you referred to in Mr. Bingham's report. Are there, is it strictly elementary schools that are being examined? Are we also looking at middle and high schools?
The actual list right now is much larger and we're narrowing it down. So. Until we finish that analysis to include sixth grade to middle school move and other items. We we have a couple more weeks worth of work to do, and then we'll be able to finalize that list for, but we need to finalize it by. Three December, so by the seventh, we can publish that report.
All righty. I do have one question. I'm sorry. It's not about this slide because Ursula Major. What are we, we're not going to repair it. What's happening with Ursula Major?
Well, we we just got an initial assessment where it's going to be incredibly expensive. We were waiting to see if a federal impact construction aid were going to be available. It was initially announced in, I think, August or September, and so far there's no grant out there. So at this point. I'd recommend that we hold until we see if there's another opportunity to use. Non municipal funds because we currently have space on post for all of those students.
Okay, so all the kids are taken care of.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you.
So many of you have joined us at the town halls, an exhilarating experience by all. And we're looking forward to tomorrow and two more next week. And then we also have three virtual town halls. That are being scheduled for the end of November. Two of those will will be for schools potentially on the closure list. And the final one will focus on allowing other parties to discuss whether it's charter schools who may move in. Or schools who would be receiving students from closing schools, and that will be the focus of the final town hall. And then we'll compile that, put it into the report for seven December.
Awesome. Thank you.
Slide please. So you could see on the repurpose plan that we we have shadowed out stream at this time. Looking at a much more likely opportunity with more green space in round two. Still uncertain as to whether the board wants us to include Aquarian or not. But you can certainly provide that feedback anytime during this briefing. And I'll hand off to Eric for preschool and the next slide.
So the early childhood, early childhood centers that we're proposing or recommending would be. Looking through the staffing numbers, the potential building and playground improvements, there are some needs there that we'd have to look at and address. In totality of adding more preschool students into the classrooms or into the schools. We do already have existing structures in place, so those are already there. We'd be expanding upon that. The school and programs, and you're going to see a slide coming up that outlines and visualizes. The complexity of the preschool programs as it relates to the overall school closure conversation. But the finalize finalization of what schools and programs that are going to move to the pre K academy is a little bit of a fluid. Fluid target based off of what schools close and the receiving and closing schools and how that is impacted into there. But we do have a general outline that we'll be able to show you. The finalized staffing and relocation plan, that's still to be coming. Those are pieces of next steps that we're going to be looking at. Go ahead and for the next slide. So with the early childhood center. The the emphasis for doing a program like that, while in in Anchorage, there isn't really a footprint. At elementary level for a concentrated, smaller grade level band, but in the lower forty eight, you do have a lot of. Programs that are like a primary school intermediate program. This is more centered or obviously around students between three and somewhat in five year olds students. And so what the benefit is, is that you consolidate resources, you consolidate hard to fill positions, your OT, your PT, your. Your school psychologists and your specialization people that are hard to get. And that are spread itinerantly across the entire district and you're concentrating that focus at both schools. You, in the proposal that we're recommending, both schools already have a strong footprint to preschool, a very successful footprint at preschool. And what we'd be doing is expanding and growing that at those two locations. The collaboration that happens at those schools, you're concentrating professionals. So you're also improving the collaborative opportunities for teachers that work in those programs. By narrowing the scope and narrowing the band, which is going to add to the value that we'll be able to provide for students and for for our staff too. The opportunities that create the best mix, it's going to be a blended program. So you have general education preschool classrooms that are going to be neighborhood based. One of the evidence pieces that you see is for students who are in high poverty areas. The opportunity of access to preschool, early intervention services and preschool education is highly beneficial for those students and those families in particular. And so that was part of the recommendation of identifying the two schools that we recommended. The inclusive opportunities for children. So we're going to have developmental pre K, we'll have Head Start, we'll have communication classroom. We'll have general education preschool in there. So you're going to have a blended program. So it won't be just a special education or just a general ed. It'll be a blended opportunity for students. And you heard that. I believe that Nacca Valley last night about the opportunity for students to see. Peers in different settings and different contexts, while you won't have the same band potentially as you would from all the way to fifth grade. You had would have different disabilities and developmental opportunities of students. The other benefit that you'd have is you'd add additional buddy bears. We're anticipating an extra eighty students and buddy bears being able to access programs, which only add to the value for students in that area that could come in. Eighty between the two schools that is.
So when you say early childhood center, is that pre K academy?
Correct, pre K academy, early childhood center. Yes, thank you for, yep. And right now, as 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 Jim spoke, we are already running. The geographic centers that are housed at both of those programs right now. As far as needs, you know, what we'd be doing is we'd be shifting also the early intervention services. So you'd have a footprint of assessment. So. One thing that we know right now is we have intensive students coming into our kindergarten and early childhood are coming in. Early intervention services, we'd have a bigger footprint for accessing assessments. From just the Ed Center, you'd have a footprint in two different schools to provide opportunity for access for identification for special education. And it would expand that as far as opportunities for families. The staff at the school, would you'd have, you'd have to have a principal staff, you'd have to have some level of operational staff. So you'd see a difference differential cost savings there. Which we'll see in a future slide coming up. The playgrounds we talked about, we have to have updated playground opportunities. So while there is already a footprint there and we do have some resources that would have to be something that we'd have to continue to dig into and evaluate that. And then also accommodations for toilet and seating. Obviously, the schools right now house students up through fifth or sixth grade. And so we'd have to do some evaluations with that. We can provide accommodations and and do that to bridge and get us to the spot where we would determine exactly the full need. But we would have to be looking at those facility pieces. So so there is some some pieces to that. The next slide really talks about the overarching impact of the school closures as it relates to preschool. And so if you you look at the six schools on here, these are all the schools that have potential impacts, both receiving and and closing schools. And for example, if you look at Wonder Park, Wonder Park has four preschool classrooms that would have to get relocated. Nunaca Valley has seven, Northwood has six, Campbell has three, right? So we're having multiple schools and multiple classrooms that are going to have to get moved and relocated by having at a center. One, you're reducing the impact to a couple of the programs that have large footprints. Will also consolidating and blending the resources from these other peripheral schools into those schools. So when you talk about the house of card conversation and the cascading impact, it truly does have a large impact when you're talking about all the different schools. That could be potentially gaining and receiving students. I'll pause there.
Yes. Member lessons.
I appreciate all of the work that's gone into this. I'm really struggling to wrap my mind around what a school full of two hundred and sixty four preschoolers looks like. When they're brought in by bus. And I mean, they have to get escorted right now from their classrooms to buses and and I realize that chaos can be. Improved upon on a daily basis through practice, but. I'm just struggling to. Kind of wrap my mind around that. And I'm wondering, I mean, yes, I understand that we have like K through two model schools outside. But two hundred and sixty four preschoolers in a building. That's a lot of lost mittens, right? I mean, that's just, that's just chaos. And I mean, looking, I'm looking at Birchwood and Homestead, and that's busing those children into. Nunaca Valley, that's a bit of a drive for preschoolers. My head kind of is exploding right now.
Yeah, and thanks for the opportunity to clarify. So the one particular with Birch. Yeah. And thanks for the opportunity to clarify. So the one particular with Birchwood, Birchwood's on the list as far as impacts. Birchwood now would not be going to the Nacca Valley. We're looking at a location in the in an area that we feel would not do that. So that would be one particular highlight. And for our preschool staff and teachers, I'd say it's not chaos. You know, our preschool teachers do a really good job and our professionals do a really good job of providing services for all of our students in preschool. The the you see the you see the chain gang walking down. We have the rope and the kids are walking through the hallways and you walk them through that. And 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 it's really like we saw when we went over to Nacca Valley, get ready for the staff meeting and you had the little preschool kids. The teachers there and the pair professionals there and they're walking, holding onto their open. They're learning how to walk in a line. Right? And that's a skill that's expected when you go into kindergarten is how do you transition and how do you move between classrooms and how do you go down to PE and how do you go down to art? And so those are skills and tools that preschool students learn also in the in being in a school and being taught by ASD teachers. So I'd say it's not chaos, but it is orchestrated. It it's 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 it is cute. A lot of little kids. A lot of little littles and but but it would look like 264 or 246, depending on which program, little students between three year olds, which are small up to the later end of five from the school year would be coming in.
And will these be half day programs?
It's blended, right? So we have some half day programs and then we
And some full day.
And then some full day programs. So it wouldn't be all one. So there'd be some students that'd be in the morning session, the afternoon session, right? Because you're going for half day, half day. So yes, thank you.
Sure. So if I were a principal at a school and I was losing my preschool program or programs to a more centralized preschool, am I gonna? How am I going to understand the students who are coming into my school the next year? I mean, I guess there are always reports, but but the relationship won't be there.
Yeah, with the school closures for relocating students from the closures, there's some schools that we will have to move preschool classes out of because of size and capacity. So those conversations are going to have to happen. You know, as far as relationship rapport, we do have schools that don't have preschool classrooms right now. And while the value is better with having preschool to provide that continuum of supports, we don't have universal preschool right now in Alaska. We have a larger footprint with special education preschool and and the value for that early intervention aspect is huge, especially transitioning to program with the busing and with the preschool service as it is right now, you might be a student at school A. But because it's a special education hub preschool, you might be end up going to kindergarten another school because that's your neighborhood, right? So that exists already right now. That wouldn't necessarily change, but in consolidation and becoming more efficient with our elementary model, there is a corresponding impact that's going to have to happen with moving our preschool classrooms.
So no schools will lose. Well, some schools will lose their pre their current programs.
A good example is Campbell for them to absorb diamond estates, those pre K programs need to move in the same at Willawas, some programs need to move in order to make space. And that's why when you know, normally when when the when the administration brings something that's somewhat complex to the board, we understand that board members will want to line item eaches. But on something like this, when you pick one thing and you want to change, you've just got to realize it's we probably haven't done the detailed staffing behind all the domino effects of that one change to be able to come back with an immediate response as to what the impacts are. So it is complicated and it's not as simple as making a change for the purpose of making it better. Because you there's no possible chance of knowing all the different things that are going to be a result of that change.
Well, I I I think we're on to something here with these early, whatever, whether we call it a pre K academy or a early childhood centers, I think. I think the community would benefit. I think our kids will come to school more prepared. We'd have, we'd be able to do more of what Chelsea's doing and with the pre with the the programs that we currently have. So this is a bright spot for me, but I I still need more information.
Okay. Remember Wilson? So if the board moves forward with the concept of a pre K academy via school closures, will the administration seek outside subject matter expertise as it develops and implements the programming at this new type of campus?
Well, it's a good question. Currently, I believe the district has the expertise it needs to run the pre the the actual pre K pieces don't necessarily change due to a change in location. So I don't see us needing to do more than we've already done. We do bring in PD professional development for those folks and we have had teacher experts on staff working with pre K all along. If we do, we certainly will. But I I Eric, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, it's a to add on to that. We did send, we have a pre K, pre K conference that was in San Diego. And so with some of the resources, we'd have been having delegates from ASD to go and look at our pre K alignment. So there has been work already been happening to make sure that we have the strongest pre K program possible. So we would just continue that effort too.
And so the funding for the pre K academy, Jim, where is that 50% or what?
We're still working on it. If it's if it's a special education grant money, then they don't get ADM credit. If it's state grant money, you don't get ADM credit. You do if it was alcohol tax, if it was marijuana tax when that comes out. And or what we we absorb through the general fund. So we're going to be working with deed actually to see if we could also get school credit for these early childhood centers, because if you can, even though the ADM would be small, it would be the highest possible amount per child that you could possibly get for those who qualify in the Oasis count to receive ADM. So we're we're several weeks away from working through how that occurs at the same time we're applying hold harmless reductions. But ultimately, we'll we'll have that solution and we'll be able to brief the board. But we are looking at multiple ways to increase revenue while we're also looking at ways to increase efficiencies across the district and reduce costs.
Thank you. Okay. Continue.
Okay, so this is an updated analysis on if the plan was followed as as we discussed earlier on how much we would get from Abbott Loop. Because we would declare it excess, worst casing, we would have to pay a full years of utilities before that building could be handed off or or demoed. So that range is between 696 and $980,000. And you can see as you go down Nunaca Valley and Northwood give you the least in terms of gains on that, however, the most in terms of increasing the efficiency of having all of those related services in high need, low density specialists at those early childhood centers. So pluses and minuses for a total of about $4 million. As we start looking at the cost to relocate some playground equipment from some schools to other schools, those costs will will always be a moving target. But that's a pretty good average, including any any loss in revenue, at least for the first two years. And what we anticipate is costs. So we'll see a lot of RFIs for people wanting details. We'll slowly start providing those details, but they have been changing almost daily as Andy and I did this. And again, we've learned from past when your numbers are changing every day as you're getting towards the end of analysis, probably not a good idea to hand out too many of those, knowing that you just have effective date issues spread across the community. But that number will probably stay relatively solid.
So back up there, Jim. Yeah. So at the bottom, I just wanted to make a couple of points. One of the questions we keep getting asked over and over is so that's an awful lot of consternation and frustration. You're only saving 4 million. Is that is that really the best and highest use? And I guess a couple of things I want to point out. It's hard to go out to these town halls and then talk about the benefits to closing a school, right? I mean, those folks are adapting to the environment that they're in and they love it and and the change is is really scary to them. But there are some things at the bottom, you'll see the phrase, although it says right sizing, I want to point out there's no wrong size for a school. But there are benefits to certain sizes. I mean, I've run schools as small as a K through eight school, 15 kids in a rural village ranch in Wyoming up to over 2,500 kids in a in a high school. There there isn't a rights, there isn't a wrong size of a school. You you educate kids how you can. But there are some benefits that I I want to make sure we're at least not ignoring. One of those is is one of the unforeseen limitations to these small schools is the number of combination classrooms where you're running multiple grade levels in them. So a teacher will have grade two and three. And if you're not in a Denali Montessori or a school where you've been trained to do multi age classrooms, that's a tough one. You've heard us say that over and over. I just want to review that. When you get up to about a three section school, three grades per grade, three classrooms per grade level, then there are some benefits and we're using that phrase right sizing, it becomes a more efficient school. So fewer combination classrooms is an advantage. Another one, more opportunities for students to accelerate. When we start talking about this whole package of things in front of you, such as ignite students that are doing enrichment activities, it's very difficult for a school to accelerate when you have two grade levels in your class and you're the only teacher. If you have three third grade classrooms, I can work with my other two peers and we can take kids who are really advanced in math and I can cluster them up. I can and and keep moving them through mathematics and I can accelerate them. Or I can back up and take a group of kids that's really struggling. That is very hard to do in a school with one grade level or a combination classroom is the only one. Those become barriers to acceleration or remediation. So that becomes more difficult. There's more staff in the building for our win groups, we call them the what I need, the remedial program that we run when kids are struggling with reading. We have more adults available to do pick up those and including accelerating our advanced students. New teachers come to the school when there's three, when they have colleagues, they have more support. So if I bring in a brand new teacher, they have the ability to mentor and work. And as a principal, I can strategically place my veteran staff. So I've got a strong veteran at every grade level who can then onboard new teachers much more easily as opposed to being the only teacher in my grade level and even running a combo to boot. So that makes it more difficult. Staffing, we've been through the last two years have been the most traumatic years we've ever had with staffing shortages, substitute problems, illnesses, everything. When you have three teachers per grade level, your abilities to flexibly handle unusual situations where there is no sub, I don't have anyone, the teacher is out, there's no adult available, my capacity is limited. So I just want to point that out. And one of the things that's very difficult, a number of folks have said, well, why aren't you emphasizing more of these positives? But when you're going out to a town hall telling a school that they're going to lose their school, their community, talking about the positives of losing your school is is really difficult for them. But for those who aren't being affected, I think these rational type of things that are not so emotional, but more logical, they can wrap their heads around these benefits. And so I just wanted to spend some time on that. The next slide. I just wanted to review this slide real quick. It it gets at our reduction philosophy, which is when back to the question, why would you close eight schools when you only save 4 million? Well, if we don't prove to our public that we are working our way through decisions that are the farthest away from children as far as affecting their classrooms in the core gen ed.
Getting ahead to a December conversation. At some point, maybe the end of summer, early fall, I asked about the expenses that are associated with the education center. And I'm curious about why, what are the prospects for decreasing our administrative expenses by relocating the ed center to one or more of our sites? And is that potential savings a part of?
I can answer that very quickly because we've got a lot of slides and 20 minutes left. If the board were to turn down sixth grade move to middle school, we would know that we were closing a middle school. We have already, we already have a contractor, the architect who renovated this ed center. It would save us four and a half million dollars a year. When we look at elementary schools, there's going to be a significant build out for even parking space to be able to have board meetings, professional development. Probably would need two elementary schools in this first round of closures. It wasn't realistic to even pretend that we could put the ed center into half of an elementary school or a wing somewhere. So it's going to be looked at much more deeply during round two closures.
I think we should continue. Can you hold your question?
Just one follow-up.
Follow-up real quick.
Yeah, and because you made reference and I appreciate the issue about the schools and what we're investing. And I guess one point I hope we get into a discussion on that because I'm at a school and I see a leaky roof and I'm told they're not working on the roof because the plan is long-term, they're going to redesign it and rebuild it and start new again. And that was very upsetting to me. And so I'm looking at this for every school where we're talking about redesign or whether we're going to rebuild it. One time it was whatever schools in the worst possible shape got rebuilt. And that's the way it was until it finally got stopped. And right now I feel like, well, we're going to do something else with it later. So we won't put the investment in there, whether it was habit loop in regards to what needs to be done, whether it was Tudor Elementary with a leaky roof, whether they're told not to fix it or not to work on it because they're going to be another long-term plan is something I'm not comfortable with. So I just, I'm going to be challenging everything here in regards to the facilities from here on. And I can tell you right now, and that is if there's something we can do that if we're planning on rebuilding it and we're not investing where we could maintain it and that's contributing to that rebuild decision, that's a concern to me. It's like, if I thought, and I don't know if there is options to inlet view other than rebuilding because we don't have the money, but I do not want to see it closed, I wouldn't want to know what that is too. So I'm looking at all the options that are out there, but I don't want to get to this issue of deferred maintenance like on a leaky roof in a gym and then find out that they're told not to do anything to it or they're not going to repair it because it long-term plan is to replace Tudor Elementary. That was upsetting and I'll tell you, that's what I got. And I, when it comes to this whole budget, everything revolves around the fact, not a scheme, this is our goal. So this is the way we're going to play it. And I just don't want to hear that and that was disturbing to me.
Just the point of clarification, what did you hear? Somebody told you what? I couldn't follow.
And Tudor Elementary and the gym, there were some areas where obviously there was some roof issues. And I was told that maintenance had said they're not going to be addressing that because the front of the school needs to be redesigned for safety reasons and it's going to require this. So they're going to look ahead at the future where they're going to rebuild it and they're not taking the actions necessary to maintain that. That was disturbing to me and I could see the damage. I could see the roof area where it was damaged and I asked about it and I challenged it and they said the decision was I'm not going to be working on the roof or doing that and no replacements because they're going to have another plan. And that was, that was a concern.
So we can get an update on that for Board Connect, please. I really think we want to move on to stay focused on our, on our presentation. So the slide before, I did have a real quick. So this, this is like the, this is the second ring of the previous slide?
This just shows the array of personnel and if you wait a couple of slides later, I'll have an update on where we stand.
All right, thank you.
All right, so shifting gears and talking about sports, that's one of the decision items that we're looking for guidance from the board on. This is something that we briefed you on a couple of work sessions ago. The chart in front of you is the cost of each sport per athlete. If you look at the far right corner and what you'll notice is the gymnastics, swimming and hockey are two most expensive sports per athlete. One of the things we're interested in exploring and would need guidance from the board on is to start having a conversation with some of our community sports programs around outsourcing. We currently have five sports that are already outsourced. And outsourcing essentially means that we still offer the sport or activity as a part of an ASD program. So students would still have the same opportunity to participate in hockey, swimming or gymnastics, but they would be facilitated by an outside organization. That takes some costs away from us as a district and places them into the community while still maintaining the opportunity for students. Obviously that there's a lot of what-ifs in that scenario, but we, we won't know if this is a complete cost savings unless we start approaching our community organizations in those three sports. And we would just like permission from the board to start those conversations and then come back to the board with a more detailed plan. You'll notice at the bottom of that slide, some of the potential cost savings that we could save. Most of the savings for those three programs mentioned come in either facility rental, renting pools or ice time, which are fairly expensive. And it, and or like in gymnastics, there's expensive equipment involved in that activity as well. So I don't want to belabor this slide because I know we have more to go, but what we're asking for is some guidance to just go ahead and have that conversation with our community organizations moving forward.
And that's just for those three sports?
Just for those three sports.
Thank you. Okay, so we're not going to get very far today.
I think the cost for gymnastics is at the dome.
The cost for gymnastics is actually the equipment and the coaching addenda and associated equipment, like supply costs. We actually house most of our gymnastics programs either at Diamond or Chuyak. That's where the equipment is set up for practice and competition.
Okay, member lessons? If, I think I'm comfortable with proceeding with the conversation, but if I am a high school swimmer at Diamond or Service or Chuyak, am I still swimming for my school? Like, do I get to wear my?
Yeah, it's a great question. Yes, you would. So we already, we already do it for the five sports that are mentioned above there. So they still wear their school colors, they still represent Diamond West or whoever they go to school for. They're still a Mustang if they go to Chuyak. So we have a model in place that we'd like to approach other organizations with.
And will students be able to get waivers?
So they would be able to get waivers just like they.
Like they would regular.
Yep, and they currently do for the five outdoor sports as well.
Okay, thank you. Member Donley?
Thank you. Is there some sort of matrix that sets out how many coaches for particular sports we contribute to? And if there is, then are teams allowed to have additional coaches if their alumni clubs or groups provide them?
So it's a little bit complex. We do have a matrix that's dictated in our AEA contract, our teacher contract. That's how much they're paid for their agenda. And if they are not an AEA member, then they are paid that same amount for coaching. So that kind of sets the bar for our coaching addenda. We do have a matrix depending on the sport of how many coaches are paid. There's, there isn't a limit on volunteer coaches, however. So often, like football is a great example because you'll see a lot of coaches on the sidelines. There are four paid coaches on the sidelines and the rest of those gentlemen typically, gentlemen coaching are volunteer coaches.
Thank you.
Thank you. Member Higgins?
Yes, from the cost standpoint, this doesn't, this includes any revenue you get when the people pay or anything else. Does it offset that?
Yeah, so we do spend about 4.4 million overall for our activities in the district. And we do charge fees. It's offset by about 675,000 a year with those fees. So we definitely, you know, add additional monies for the opportunities for our kids to participate in sports.
Some of these sports are kind of like set up as classes in school. Some of them as well, they offset. Are you, is it offsetting, there's no cost, you're not adding the coach or the cost of the staff at that point? Or you, because if it wasn't for them, it would be another teacher, right, for another class?
Right, so I think just using an example like a band program, typically the band teacher is paid as a teacher during the day to implement their program, but they receive an additional addenda as the band director. And that's to facilitate concerts and community events that they're playing at. Often our bands are playing at pep rallies, at different games and things like that.
So this, this is the extra amount that you're paying?
Yes, this is the extra.
Okay.
All right, let's continue. Thank you.
Hey, and so up for your consideration, and we've brought this up in previous meetings, is that we'd like to modify our current highly gifted program with the elimination of Ignite. We would develop supports in an alternate way. We would continue with our highly gifted programs in Rogers Park, Romig and West. And then the cost savings remain the same. We're looking at approximately $3 million reduction in costs and that bus, and we would also, it would also support eliminating bus routes to the program, freeing up, freeing up these resources.
With the exception of Rogers Park, which most of those students are bused, but we're talking about the few schools that do ignite, yes.
Yes, member Wilson.
Just for clarification, how many schools receive busing for Ignite?
We can, maybe we can get back to you on that.
I want to say it's three to five, but let's clarify.
Okay, let's continue.
Okay, this is another item that we're seeking guidance from the board on, a sixth grade move to middle school. So as we've briefed before, there are three current middle schools, Begich, Clark and Mirlech, who currently have sixth graders. The rest of our middle schools have only seventh and eighth grade. We would like to propose moving all sixth graders to middle schools. With that move would become a different schedule that we would have to look into because it would eliminate what we've called the middle school model or what teachers are calling collaboration time in their schools now. So there is that period of the day that teachers are participating in collaboration time currently that would be eliminated in this move to ensure a cost savings. And we would explore different options for that time and how to support our kids and staff. And that would be a future conversation that we would bring to the board. What I do want to focus on in a little more depth tonight is the advantages of sixth graders moving to middle school. I think that first and foremost, having a split system where some of our sixth graders are at elementary and some of our sixth graders are at secondary poses a lot of logistical concerns within our system. You know, it just gets really complicated when we have different systems going on at every school, community. But there's really some great benefits to kids from my vantage point as the secondary senior director in the district. One is just really a wide variety of electives and exploratory activities that they can engage in that they don't necessarily always get at the elementary level. So one of them is CTE course offerings in the sixth grade. The other real benefit to kids moving to sixth grade is we eliminate that cost of elementary band and orchestra. It also creates a lot of scheduling challenges at the elementary level. And students who choose to move to sixth grade and take band or orchestra, they also would have availability to be inquire as well, which they don't currently get as an opportunity. And they would get that instruction daily, which is far more frequent than what they get in the elementary school model. They'd also be exposed to world language opportunities that they don't get in sixth grade at the elementary level unless they are engaged in an immersion program. I think another thing that gets more to core academics that is a benefit moving sixth grade up to middle school is a dedicated daily instruction around social studies and science. Often the focus at elementary centers around math and reading. And not that we don't teach social studies and science, but there is dedicated time at the middle school level for that. And they can dive deeper into those subjects. And then another logistical challenge we have in the system that we're currently living with is that students who are advanced math students at the sixth grade level in elementary school often have to take algebra or geometry either online or in an alternate manner. And that often is really burdensome to the student and the family. There are families that take their kids to middle school for these courses and then drive them to elementary school for the rest of their day. There are a variety of models, but this would eliminate that problem in our system for our families and kids where they could be at their middle school and receive that instruction directly without an interruption to their day. And then another benefit is PE classes and on a daily basis and regular participation in sports and activities at an earlier age. So currently our sixth graders at middle school are engaged in all of those extracurricular activities. They get PE daily. It's really good for them to move at that age and get exercise. And so we would be able to do that for all of our kids with this move. And then when you look at our building capacity at the middle school level, if you remember, middle school is the lowest percentage of usage across the division. When we, when we move our sixth graders up, we would definitely be using our facilities more readily and more efficiently. We would also meet some needs of some of our special education or special populations a little more readily by having more related services in one space for kids. So looking at the bottom half of this slide, this shows you a little bit of a timeline of what we would propose to the board as a way to move forward. We would recommend a two-year phased-in approach to moving sixth graders to middle school. And part of the reason for doing it in two years as opposed to one year really just comes down to logistics. It's not that we're not ready with the academics because we already do sixth grade at middle school, but there are a lot of concerns around boundaries, communicating with families, moving teachers and equipment. And if you combine that with. And if you combine that with school closures on the table as well in one summer, that, that's a lot of moving parts. And so we want to be realistic about how, how logistically we're able to make that move. There's also a lot of human resources and hiring concerns that we need to, to flesh out as well. As you can imagine, with more students going to middle school, we'll need more teachers at that level, and so we'll have to come up with our process for that as well. But what we're proposing is kind of looking at a north-south model, the first year being our north-end schools, moving to a six-eight model. That's where a majority of our six-eight schools are already. So we would move Greening, Central, Romig and Wendler with six to six through eight programs. And then the following year, we would bring Hanchu, Mears and Goldenview along. And throughout that two years, we would definitely be looking at boundaries at middle school to balance out our school populations. And it would likely touch most of our schools in some way. But that's more further analysis that we need to work on. So that is, that is what I've got for sixth grade changes to middle school, and we're looking for your guidance this evening.
Member Donley and then member lessons.
Thank you, Madam President. It's probably easier for me because I've been advocating going away from the middle school model for years now and the savings that would bring. But it occurs to me that this is a real fundamental first choice the board needs to make to make a lot of other things work here. And I'm ready to make that decision at this point. It's probably easier on me because I've already been on record, you know, supporting that. But I was wondering, is there any chance that there's enough other members?
Actually, in the last.
Finance committee.
We did a straw poll and it was a positive goal.
Well, if it's possible to do, I would recommend, I would request that the board consider making that decision sooner rather than later. Not wait till the December, but to move ahead with that because it just seems like so much of what our team is planning depends upon that.
And that is, that is correct. So thank you for that, member Donley.
Two slides from now, we're going to put the things that we're going to ask the board to, to raise their hands on. And so I strongly support member Donley's request.
If I could, I'd like to add one piece to the whole middle school piece, you know, one of the, the big concerns of, well, actually everyone, it was even a concern of the board during your retreat this summer, and that is, you know, how do we try to support our teachers with all the trainings, all the changes, professional development, so on? And then combined with this situation with the, the changes in the middle school schedule, what we would like to do as part of this, if we move this direction, we'd like to come back to you with the proposal with regarding to having K through 12 collaboration time for the fall, where there would be a, a time of release for an hour or so per week where collaboration and grade level work and working through all these issues with training and everything that we're behind on. And that would also help support some of the collaboration time that middle schools will be not able to have anymore. High schools have what we call PLC time now because a lot of their kids drive and they can come in late and it doesn't affect everything. But at the elementary level, we are really crunched for time with all the reading initiatives, the state's reading work, the stuff we have to do as, as Pat Higgins keeps talking about, the outcomes piece, our student outcomes. So I just wanted to point out that we would, that to us, that's all part of that, that we would come back to you with conversations about things like start time and release time and things that go with all of this. Just one of the.
And I'm curious, I might not have the answer today, but what parts of middle school will remain?
So to your question, Madam President, I think that the part that I'm committed to maintaining is really working on transitions to and from middle school, really focusing on SEL, but integrating that into our college career life plan so that our SEL is integrated with career pathways as well. Because when you look at employment needs, those soft skills that employers talk about are really SEL skills and a middle school is really an essential part of that. And I think the exploratory aspect of middle school is really important as well, and that also will link to our CCL goal as well. So those aspects of what we would call a traditional philosophical middle school model would remain.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
I would like to say, moving away from it's one thing, but we don't know what we're moving to exactly. So more details on what those now three years would look like. I, I would want to at least have some sketch of that before I felt like I could vote and say what we're doing.
And I think, you know, Clark, we, we, we're already doing it. We, we have Clark that's six-eight, we have Begich and Mirleke. So we have, we have, I know what happens at Clark. I don't know what happens at Begich.
Well, as far as elementary, that's, they moved to a middle school, so they're on that model. But moving away from.
From the middle school, yeah.
What, what are we moving to? That's what's not clear.
Good point.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, member lessons and then Wilson. And then we're going to be out of time. Go to the slide where you need us to raise our hands, this one. Okay, member Wilson.
Lessons, all right. I, I am excited about the move of, of sixth graders to middle schools for a lot of reasons. So as I indicated in the finance meeting, I will support that. I am going to find it very challenging to support eliminating Ignite. I'm, I'm not, I'm not on that team yet. And I will support efforts to outsource hockey, swimming and gymnastics.
Okay, well, two out of twenty ain't bad.
That was quicker than I thought, Kelly. I, I, I support moving sixth graders to middle school is, is President Bellamy has stated that we, the, the district is also actually partway there. I, I do have a question in regards to the, the middle schools that have sixth graders in there. And please clarify for me because I don't understand, are they not following the middle school model? Is there a difference?
All of our schools, so there's various definitions of middle school model. That's what makes it really complicated. And that's why there's a lot of confusion around it. So what we deem honestly as a middle school model at this point is collaboration time and that class period in addition to exploration and SEL activities. But in terms of our scheduling, a lot of middle school philosophy centers around teams where you have four core teachers all working with the same group of kids. So you create those smaller learning communities within your school. That is happening in hybrid fashion now, given the PTR constraints. What you'll find at most schools is a social studies, English and science teacher that are teaming with 100% accuracy in most places, but often math is off-team. But there's essentially our PTR and where we are with staffing has really changed our ability to do a pure middle school model, which is that team. Really the essential part of the philosophical middle school model is that team where you have 120 kids that have four of the same core teachers. So we're, we're doing it about halfway now, but the collaboration time period is what really costs us money in terms of where we're at as a district. So to move sixth grade to middle school for cost savings, that's really the piece that has to go away and we have to reimagine that. That's where the professional learning communities that high school does may be a good option for us to transition and make that a K through 12 program and take a lot of the work that we do in collaboration time at middle school and, and filter that into that space, just in a different way.
One quick follow-up request, not, so, so a request would be to have a list of schools to, so, so I understand how many additional schools would be affected by moving those sixth graders to the middle school and drop, that would drop their capacity below 65%. So that's, that's a request for, for later if possible.
Okay, we can do that.
Okay. All right.
So is it?
Yes.
Yeah, so I just want to go through our admin recommendations. We're just trying to give this, these aren't decisional. We understand, like we said before, that this impacts this and I'm not going to go out on a limb on this until I know that. There's all those pieces and I, we're working on the fine tuning all that and we'll have a really interesting, easy to understand activity to jigsaw that together so we can figure out where, where you're at each of you individually on this. It would be good, be great if we could get close to a seven-member board to provide some consensus on the biggest things. If not, you know, we're going to be down into February and December looking at a majority of you. But for now, before we drill down and do hundreds of hours, there are hundreds of thousands of decisions to make. We do need some kind of indication from some of you, and some of you've already weighed in on the sixth grade to the middle school piece. And if we have a majority of you, sounds like that are interested, some sounds like might need more information or they're not there yet. The second one was about Ignite. Ignite has been on the docket for multiple years. It's something to discuss. It's, this is the closest it's come to being part of a whole bigger discussion of lots of other things we have to deal with. But Ignite is one of those that's on the table. It's about a $3 million piece that has to be looked at. The other one was the researching, the outsourcing. So we were kind of wanting to have a thumbs up or down on us pursuing these things tonight. Again, not decisional because your final.
So it's just these three?
For tonight.
Um, now, I thought we had, because you're right, Ignite has come up several times, but we've, I thought a group of teachers were supposed to be working or some group was working on reimagining Ignite. Did that not happen?
That happened back on the day and then two years ago. And when the, when the board didn't approve that, then that work stopped.
Okay.
And now we're in a much different financial situation than we were then. We were just trying to sort of stem the flow back then. And so when those decisions weren't made, now it's kind of snowballed. Thumbs up or down on each one? Where, where, where are we at on the middle school?
I think we're pretty clear on the first bullet and the second bullet. I mean, the third bullet.
Okay.
I know I'm, I, I still need to process. If we're going to reimagine and redesign Ignite, that means something to me than eliminate. So I.
Yeah, what we're talking about, the whole gifted program, remember, highly gifted stays. Remember that part of this ties to the acceleration enrichment pieces we've talked about by right sizing schools. Then we're able to, to work with schools on acceleration pieces, which are very difficult for these small schools to do right now. So there's a lot of pieces that impact other pieces.
I'm here, we're ready.
You're in the middle.
The other two, I'm fine. Member Higgins?
Yeah, one of the, one of the issues here, when we put together a list of these are the things that we're putting on the chopping block, is if we get additional funds, what comes off the chopping block? Okay. And so you're asking right now what we're willing to put on it, but the, but the priorities are not being discussed in regards to that. That's a huge issue to me, okay? You want to close schools, that's irreversible type. We're going to make that decision and we're stuck with it even if we get more funds. We got, we got other changes we can make. So without looking at that list, I can't say which one of these are reversible, which ones I consider to be the highest priority. Or how that plays out. That's one of the problems with a thumbs up, thumbs down. Right now you're saying this is the, this is the one group we're willing to share with you that we're looking at cut. Give us a thumbs up or down and then we'll tell you what the other list is. I can't do that. I, I can't, I'm not yielding my, my vote to the recommendation of the administration without all the information laid out in some way that I can make the decision without just saying I approve your decision. And I think that's what I feel like I'm being asked to do and that's the problem. I agree with the discussion before, there are pros and cons to every single cut. There really are. And, and I think that we need to be open-minded about it and say, that's true. I, I acknowledge that. But in doing so, where you got to choose between the two, I'd like to know what, what I'm choosing between. And if we get additional funding, what's going to be put back into it?
So your thumb will be down on all three? Okay. So, and that is why we are having our work session on December 10th. Really, I think we're just trying to give some guidance. So the team, so that the, the team can.
I think, I think this, this was helpful. This, this gives us enough for what we need to do to keep drilling down and working on pieces, some harder than others. And we'll just keep plowing ahead. But again, like I said, not decisional, even on December 10th, what we're doing in our work session is not decisional, but it really, it really requires each of you to be able to know where the other ones are thinking so we can see if there's what the common ground is. And so I think our activity on the 10th will, will help that out. Meanwhile, we'll just keep working.
We are six minutes past our time. We can, you guys.
Is there one more I could add?
Sure.
There's a really big one. Tonight, we're going to probably have, who knows, 100 people wanting to talk about immersion. I want to point out something, back up one slide, please. I want to show you one thing that we've been working for a couple of weeks now. The immersion piece has been particularly challenging to try to parse out. But what I can tell you is this, I talked to Director Locke today quite a bit. And one of the things that as administration, we would like to put out there is we would like to put immersion as a K-12 program on the unlikely reduction page. You look at your, see the little scales there, you'll see how it's now showed up on the unlikely reduction page. But I want to, I want to point out that my conversations with Brandon are the savings that comes from changing Ignite is really hard to parse out. But what it really is, is the difference between the PTR class size for a non-immersion in comparison to the class sizes on the immersion side. The delta between those two is the actual cost. So in other words, if you cut out all immersions and did away with all seven of them and they all moved into neighborhood programs, you still have to have teachers at the, the PTR level of what we're funding, right? So the, the cost differential is really the class size difference. What I said to Brandon today was, if we could work through recruitment and we can get through all our other things to get the PTR and the class sizes of each grade level of immersion classes to be fairly comparable or equal to the neighborhood sides, it's a non-issue. This is a revenue neutral thing then. So what we'd like to do is to put this on the unlikely reduction and then work with Brandon's team because they have to make changes. If, I'll just put it this way. If an ELL student, an English language learner shows up from Nicaragua in the sixth grade and speaks no English, they go into the sixth grade class and gets some tutoring on the side from an ELL tutor in Spanish. On the immersion side, if a third grader shows up from Nicaragua and, and wants to, well, for me, if a third grader here in town wants to suddenly decide to switch over and take Spanish, they give him a language test and if he's not at the third grade level with Spanish, they, he's not allowed in. My point to it is, is if we're ever going to have, if we keep raising PTR and leave the immersion program exactly as it is right now, you're going to end up with 38 students in a sixth grade, fifth grade classroom with 17 in the immersion side, and that differential is where the costs are. So we're going to put it on the unlikely reduction page, which means it's off the table this year for talking about cuts. And what we would like to do then is explore modifications, slight ones to try to help recruit and keep our PTR levels, our class sizes at a somewhat comparable class size to non-immersion neighborhood classes. And then this is a non-issue.
Okay. I would say that's really exciting and, you know, we've received emails from the ambassador of France and a few other dignitaries, so maybe they can help out in, in those efforts.
I mean, it's still a real deal and we still have work to do to try to make that, that, but we can work on that before we do something that's hard to undo.
Okay.
So.
And that goes back to member Higgins' question. Okay. Five more minutes and then we have to, we have to move into executive session.
And, and I'll be real quick and just say that having been to some of the crossing over and graduation ceremonies for immersion, it's, has a fundamentally different connection for those students and families to the district. And of course, it's taken a long time to build all that. And the idea that we could perhaps build it into something that is cost neutral. There's years of work in this program. I would, and I feel like if we do cut it, we'll never get it back. So yeah, wholeheartedly support what you outlined.
Great. Real quick.
Quick point of clarification. This is removing immersion programs from potential cuts this year.
Correct.
So if we see no change from Juneau in the upcoming legislative session, if we don't see an increase of the base student allocation, they could be on the table any year from now.
Yep.
Well, every program could be. So I. Well, every program could be. So I, I'm not going to.
So this would be a really good opportunity.
It's a good opportunity.
People to continue to advocate.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
That's, that's the name of the game. We've got to let, we've got to make education important to the whole state. Move to adjourn, please, somebody. Thank you, team.
And move to adjourn to executive session.
Moved in second to adjourn into executive session for legal. Any opposition as you walk away? Thank you. We are adjourned.